You are at your time, and I believe we have a small problem with Director Kiesewetter connecting, but the meeting is yours and you are live on home TV, so anytime you'd like to start.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Hopefully Director Kiesewetter can join us shortly. We are going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian, our zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. The time is 6:31, and I will now call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda for the evening will be actually to approve our agenda. Does anyone have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Member Shorkey, and seconded by Member Wazinski. We have a motion to approve, seconded. Any discussion on that agenda? Anything that needs to be added, or any questions? Okay. And, I'm sorry, let me make a quick note here. I should have done this already. Going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. Member Shorkey?
Here.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member Wazinski?
Here.
And Member Kohaneck?
Here.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. All right. And... I'm sorry, I read that wrong. This has been a while, you guys. I'm going to go through that one more time just so we have correct- correctly for the minutes. This is a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. All those in... All those in favor, please say yes when I call your name. All those opposed, please say no. Member Shorkey?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member Wazinski?
Yes.
Member Kohaneck?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, our agenda is passed. Next on our agenda will be the minutes. We do have two sets of minutes because we did not have our minutes ready to approve at our last meeting, which was in June. So we have two sets of minutes here. It looks like our first set of minutes is, let me make sure I have the date correct, so that is correct for the record. Minutes from our meeting on January 8, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
They're moved.
Member Field Foster, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Member Wazinski. Same as agenda, I will go through our roll here, and if you agree with approving the minutes, please say yes. All those opposed, please say no. Member Shorkey?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member Wazinski?
Yes.
Member Kohaneck?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We also have a set of minutes from... Again, let me get the date correct. June 10, 2020. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from June 10, 2020. Moved by Member Wazinski. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Member Kohaneck. All right, so all those in favor of approval of the minutes of June 10, please say yes. Member Shorkey?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member Wazinski?
Yes.
Member Kohaneck?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the minutes for June 10 are approved. Moving on, I want to acknowledge the receipt of two communications received regarding tonight's new business and case number... Excuse me, going back and forth here. Regarding case number 20-08-26-1, I have communication from two different members of the community in opposition to tonight's variance request. And I'm sure that if anyone or the chair would like to discuss those communications, we can do so while we are in a board time as we move forward through the agenda. So with that, let's go ahead and move into new business. Tonight we have ZBA case number 20-08-26-1. Jerry Fiedler Homes, 50-50, 55-70, Oakmuss Road, East Lansing. And this is a variance request to... I'm sorry. Reading it on my computer screen while I'm talking, it's really difficult. You know what, I'm going to let Director, or I'm sorry. Let Mr. Chapman go ahead and take over from here and tell us all about this case.
Okay, hi everybody. I'm going to share my screen here with you. At least attempt to.
Bless you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, can everybody see my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so this is a variance request. As the chair said, for Jerry Fiedler Homes, he's requesting a variance to construct a single-family home that's located on East Lake Drive. So this property is located on the north side of East Lake Drive. Currently, it's vacant. There's nothing developed on the parcel. It's approximately 13.02 acres and is zoned RA, single-family, medium density. So the applicant is intending to construct a 2,143 square foot, single-family house. So there is one wetland that is located on the property, and the applicant had it delineated by their wetland consultant, and then that was verified by the township's wetland consultant. And... So they came to the consensus that the wetland is approximately 12.75 acres in size. And... Yeah, so the proposed house driveway and grading will be located within the township's 40-foot wetland setback and the 20-foot natural vegetation strip. So these are the requirements for the wetland setback and the 20-foot natural vegetation strip. So, let me go to the next slide. Actually, I skipped a part, sorry. The zoning ordinance specifies that activities that are prohibited within the 20-foot and 40-foot setbacks. Within the 40-foot, they can't do any structures or grading. And then the 20-foot has a list of things that you can and can't do. So you can't have... You can't do selective pruning, remove to provide access views to water features. No more than 10% of the length of the strip of land can be cut or removed. Pathways can be used for accessing the water features, but can't be more than 10 feet in width, and a live root system has to be maintained for the stream bank's strip stabilization and erosion control. So the applicant has three sort of separate requests, basically. So, in terms of grading on the site, and I'll flip back and forth between this and the site plan so that you can get a better idea as to the requests. But, so the grading, this will be located 2 feet from the wetland boundary, which is encroaching 18 feet into that 20-foot natural vegetation strip and 38 feet into the 40-foot wetland setback. So if you look at the site plan here, you will see that down here where the 2 is highlighted is that closest point for the grading. So the house is going to be 2 feet 6 inches from the 20-foot natural vegetation strip and will encroach 17 feet 6 inches into the 40-foot wetland setback. So that's going to be this area right up in here where this 2 feet 6 inches is highlighted. The driveway, this will be located in the entirety of the 40-foot wetland setback and natural vegetation strip. So that's from this point, the 40-foot buffer down to here, to Lake Drive. And this just shows where the wetland was delineated. So, like I said before, the property's about 13 acres in size. The wetland covers 12.75 acres of that. So this upland point is about a quarter of an acre in size where the house is proposed to be built. This just goes over the relevant ordinance sections pertaining to this request. And this differs a little bit from what was in the staff report, so I'll just read each one through. So if the zoning board of appeals decides to approve the request, staff recommends the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain a soil erosion and sedimentation control permit from Meridian Township Department of Public Works and Engineering as applicable. The applicant shall stake the edge limit of grading corners of the house and deck and driveway on the parcel before any excavation or construction begins. And the applicant shall install erosion control silt fencing along the boundary of the wetland before construction of the house and driveway to prevent erosion into the regulated wetland. The shall remain for the duration of the house and driveway construction, and the single-family house driveway and grading are limited to the dimensions and locations as presented to the zoning board of appeals on the site plan prepared by Jerry Fiedler Homes dated August 4, 2020, received by the township on August 26, 2020. So with that... That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is the applicant or any of the applicant's representatives available and would like to speak this evening?
Mr. Fiedler, in the attendee area, with your permission, I'll proponent him to be a panelist.
Please do.
And Mr. Fiedler is reconnecting right now as a panelist, and I'm granting him the ability to share his screen if he needs to do so.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Fiedler, when you're ready, if you could just give us your name and your address for the official record, that would be great.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Good, thank you. My name is Gerald Fiedler, and I reside at 5570 Oakmuss Road, East Lansing.
Thank you very much. Would you like to add anything to the presentation that Mr. Chapman just gave on your variance request?
Yes, 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 I would. Thank you. What we would like to do is discuss the land, and we have on this 13-acre parcel is a little bit over a quarter of an acre that is a buildable parcel. And so we're proposing to build my son Will's house on that parcel. It has 1,200 square feet on the first floor with a two-car garage. So we've tried to minimize the footprint to try to fit the house on that quarter of an acre. And the 2-foot of where that we get close to the wetland is where the house or the driveway exits out. Can we show that, Damon?
Yes, we can.
We wanted to show where the plan that... Yeah, that one right there. And if that you board members will notice how the property line, they can't see my finger.
Nope, I can see the mouse.
And so, right in here is the property line. And so we've turned the house a little bit to be able to exit out perpendicular to the road and, and keeping 2 feet in that area out of the wetland. And that's why the drive takes a turn off that way. That is why the house is tilted a little bit in that direction to make it workable to drive up into the driveway. If you notice that, that every location, we're at least substantially 20-foot out of the buffer, except for a corner on... Show that little corner, we're 2'6", and we would hand grade that back out and have the silt fence at that location. And then we would, when we landscaped, we would landscape with the plants that, that were disturbed in that area back. And, and then basically, this here parcel is about a 13-acre parcel. And we would show the whole parcel again there. The whole parcel, we would, the majority show this whole thing. The whole parcel there is mostly wetland. There's a little high spot in the middle of it. But the bottom line is, back to this corner here, we would like to, if we can get this all to work, and we purchased this, we have that, our purchase is subject to approval. If we were able to get this approved, we would donate the land that to the, this point, right there, right at that point, going off to the north this way, to the land preservation for the township. And that land connects to the Lake Lansing Park North. I think we have a picture of that one as well. And that is this parcel that it connects to, and it's that little triangular piece right in there. And that's Lake Lansing Park North, and that's the parcel that we have, that we're working on getting the variance on. We have... I guess is that if the board members have questions, would... And I might have a few more points that I would like to bring up if I think of something. But that's kind of our presentation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Fiedler. And yes, we will, as we discussed, we may have questions for you, and we will just, you know, obviously keep you as a panelist during this discussion so that we can refer to you and you can answer if we, any of the board members have any questions for you. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this case tonight? Yeah, Mr. Fiedler? If not, then I'm going to go ahead and go into board time. I'm sorry, I can't see if there are any hands raised, so maybe let me know.
There's one, so we have, Mr. Fletcher would like to speak on this, so I'm going to unmute him here.
Okay, great. Mr. Fletcher, you're going to be available to speak. We just need to have your name and your address, please, for the official records. Go ahead.
Sure, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, great, thank you.
Perfect. My name is Brock Fletcher, and my address is 11091 Jerrison Drive, and that's Grand ledge, Michigan, 48837.
Thank you. Go ahead with your, with your comment.
Perfect. So I'm, I'm actually the listing agent for the parcel that Jerry is purchasing. And the owners have asked me to just say a few words on their behalf this evening. So Robert Pozel is the owner. He bought the property approximately 50 years ago when he got out of the Marine Corps and always had intentions of, of building a home here on the property. That never came to fruition. Life took them to basically the West Coast, to California. But his daughter, he is kind of in his last few moments of life, if you will. His daughter Sarah is handling his affairs now. She's the one that actually signed the application, but she just wanted me to share that, you know, they've owned the property for over 50 years. They've always presumed it was a buildable parcel. Have been happy to pay taxes as a buildable parcel for the last 50 years. And, you know, she just said it would be absolutely devastating to basically find that they had been paying taxes on a parcel that was supposedly buildable for 50 years, only to find out that it was basically worthless because of the wetlands on the property, which I understand is not anybody's fault, but, you know, even, even to the township. And I know the assessing records are not locked in stone, or they're not gospel, or whatever, but, but even the township has presumed that the property had a value of somewhere around $70,000 as a building parcel. So that's, that was the only thing that she wanted me to convey, and so with that, I'll turn it back to you guys, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fletcher. I believe there's somebody else that wanted to make a comment. Is that Mr. Lee? It looks like we've had another panelist added, so I'm assuming that's Mr. Lee there that needed, or wanted to rather to...
Mr. Lee, we're still working with Mr. Kiesewetter.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay. On that note, then, if we do not have any other attendants that want to make a comment on this case for now, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to board time. I'm going to give it one second. I don't see anybody else in the attendees list, so... We will go ahead and go to board time, and this is the time for our members. I know it's been a long time since we've had a meeting, but this is the time we can discuss, go through those eight criteria to determine if a variance can be granted based on those criteria. This is the time to ask any questions you need to. We can ask questions of staff. We can ask questions of Mr. Fiedler, who is here as a representative, as the applicant. And we can ask each other and discuss with one another. So that's a refresher just as much for, for myself as it is for our new, newer members. And, you know, obviously, we can all, you know, have input and talk about this case. So is there anybody like, would like to start, or anybody that has any questions for staff or for Mr. Fiedler as we get our discussion going? Member Wazinski?
I have a couple of questions. First one would be for staff, so either Keith or, oh, you, Director Kieselback, he's here.
Yeah, he's there, there we go.
So the realtor had mentioned that the, that the current owner had, was under the impression that this was a buildable property up until recently. Do we have any, any recollection of that, or any historical knowledge of why they may think that, considering it's 12 out of the 13 acres of wetland and hydro soils?
Yeah, I can talk to that a little bit. So basically, the way it works is, you know, we don't particularly go in and do like a wetland assessment of a random property. So we don't have any way of knowing exactly what is on that property until the applicant has done, you know, the due diligence to, to get the delineation done for that parcel. That being said, you know, wetlands change over time, so there's nothing set in stone with that. So that, you know, what's there now may not have been there the 50 years ago when he bought it. So it's, it's really hard to say how that came about.
Okay, second question would be for Mr. Fiedler. So knowing and seeing the wetland delineation survey, do you have any geotechnical survey, or do we even know if the soils are suitable for building, even given that the variance was approved?
Yes. We did soil testing on the site and determined that there was plenty of upland topsoil, or not topsoil, but bearing soil for the site. And so, yes, we did do that testing. And I would just like to interject, Mr. Pozel, when he purchased it back in the 70s, there was not a wetland ordinance in the township at the time. And so he probably assumed that it was buildable, and that's, that's all I can interject on that. But there wasn't a, there wasn't an ordinance at that time.
I have one follow-up question, if you don't mind, Chairman Sauer. Director Kieselback, so I know that Eagle and/or DEQ at the time has the 20-foot setback variance, or it's 20-foot setback. Meridian Township has the 40-foot setback. Were those in place at the time of purchase? Do you, do you know? I mean, if it's 50 years old, I assume the state of Michigan would have had a wetland setback.
And I apologize for the technical difficulties I've been having tonight, but anyway, the state Eagle does not have a setback requirement. It's the township. That, the original wetland ordinance was adopted in 1991. The setback requirement was added to the zoning, not to the wetland ordinance itself, to try to protect the wetlands and keep a buffer. That was 1994. And again, as was said, we've got, depending on the size of the wetland, if it's 2 acres or more, there's a 40-foot setback. If it's less than 2 acres, then it's a 20-foot setback.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Director Kieselback. Member Field Foster, I think you had a question?
I do. So, Mr. Fiedler, I was wondering, have you had any discussions with Eagle as far as even getting a wetlands permit to build in this area?
We, I guess is that we assumed that since the build was out of their 20-foot buffer and that we were not, and the driveway was the only thing that was still within the 20-foot buffer, that we did not need a permit from DEQ to pursue the build.
So, I guess I was, and maybe I misread something in the report that your consultant provided, saying that the property was regulated by Eagle as well as the township. Is that not accurate?
I guess is that, you'll have to forgive me. I'm not sure, I don't know who Eagle is.
Oh, sorry, the Department of Environmental, Environmental...
Great Lakes.
Yeah, Great Lakes.
What the DEQ has become.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, we were of the impression that they had the 20-foot buffer, and that's why we were keeping out of that buffer zone. And that the driveway exits... And that the driveway exiting out onto the street, I was of the belief that a permit was not necessary to go out onto the street from this parcel if we were not encroaching actually in the wetland.
Have there been any conversations other than just here with maybe the drain commissioner or anyone else from the township as far as the likelihood of getting the permitting for that?
Well, we had talked to engineering about a permit, about permitting, and discussed that the Meridian Township handles the soil erosion inside the township. So we don't believe that a permit is necessary from the drain office. And only through the engineering do we need soil erosion and water and sewer permits through the township and building permit through the township. And the road permit, we assumed the Ingham County Road Department would issue a permit because we're exiting perpendicular onto the Lake Drive. And, and we are, do not have any site distance issues to deal with.
So I have one last question, since we brought up the property as it was purchased 50 years ago or so. And so the fact that there was no ordinance in place for the original owner, for the current owner, is there some type of grandfather clause that keeps whatever expectations in place for a new owner? As far as making sure that the property is buildable, that the zoning ordinances don't necessarily have the same type of impact?
Well, is that a question for me?
If, if you have an answer to that, that's fine. I don't know if maybe Director Kieselbach or Mr. Chapman have an answer for that.
Yeah, I can, the zoning on the property hasn't changed. That zoning classification came in until the, in the 1960s. So it's remained in that single-family category since that time. And that, and again, I, you know, I missed the first part of the discussion, but again, this is a, about a quarter acre, a small area of upland outside of the wetland. So unless there was impact to the wetland, then they would need a permit through Eagle. But in this case, it's the, it's the township zoning ordinance that requires the setback is what they're seeking the variance for.
Do any other members have any questions as of right now? Member Wazinski?
Hello, this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Coleheneck.
No, no, you can.
I need that.
No, I know you can't see me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Member Wazinski, would you like to go ahead, and then Member Coleheneck?
I'll let Coleheneck go first, to follow up question, if that's okay?
Okay, sounds great. Member Coleheneck, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I apologize. I know you can't see me, and I really admire the chairperson for the work that she's doing and, and getting through this and, and under these, under these circumstances. And I apologize if this question's already been answered, or, but I, I just want to have it clear in my mind. Is there any way to position this house on the property without encroaching into these buffer areas?
David, did you want to show that I have an answer for you? And I would like to direct your attention to our map. The, if we were to show that line, if you can see that 40-foot buffer line. And the property, our, our boundaries are this dotted line here. Show this line, David. That line that you're seeing on the cursor is the 85-foot setback from the middle of the road. And so that is one criteria. The house, the building has to be that far back. And then our 40-foot buffer runs, show that line, starting there and coming through the property. And you see that line, as that goes traverses through the property. We the, and the, and the base first floor is 1,200 square foot. Can you build on it? I think that you could put like a 18-foot wide, because you have to be 10-foot off the property line and the, and the, I'm gonna call it the west side. Have to be 10-foot, you have to be 80-foot off the street. You would end up with something that I think that would be more like a trailer that you had set in there. Because it would be long and vertical. And so to answer your question, we thought about all of the things that we can do. And we made a pretty big effort to stay out of the 20-foot, but we knew that we couldn't build the house and be out of the 40-foot buffer. So we went and took the footprint and put it into the 40-foot, but designed it to stay out of the 20-foot. And then had to bring the driveway down to the Lake Drive perpendicular. And the property line for this property, you can see that the drive touches, just about touches the property line in that corner. And we're still two foot out of the actual wetland on the other side. So we did a lot of work to develop this plan to try to minimize the impact in, into the, the 20-foot buffer. And certainly are substantially out of the, or at least 22-foot out of the actual wetland. And that wetland, I don't know if folks have visited the site, but that wetland is very, it's very noticeable. It's not a subtle thing. The highland kind of drops off right into a wet, actual wetland area. So it's pretty well, well-defined of where it is, so that there wouldn't be any chance or impact of people not realizing that they were operating in the wetland, because it is actually wet in their wetland. And it drops off. So, you know, so we placed the house in such a way that we think that this is the, not a perfect solution, obviously, because we're asking for the variance. But it is a solution that gets the buyer a small quarter-acre lot and a nice little parcel, and minimizes the effect of the wetland.
Okay, I, I appreciate that explanation. Please understand, again, I'm, I'm no builder. And so some of this I don't understand very well. But when I see the grading, I'm, I'm looking at one of the many documents we've been sent that shows the grading edge. Can you describe for me, the non-builder, the necessity of that grading? What, what, what exactly that is, and why it's necessary, and can that be limited?
That can be further limited. That can be further limited. What it does is, is that it's a quarter of an acre of a lot. And it has, you know, you'd like to have some yard in, onto the lot. And so again, you know, we, we've stayed out of the 20-foot and, or into the 40-foot to provide some yard. You see in the front of the house where the 40-foot buffer is protrudes in the front substantially. And you'd like to, you'd like to maintain a nice pleasant little yard, which we think that we're doing. And, but we're flexible in that regard. And, you know, flexible is, can we make the front porch a little smaller? We could make the front porch a little smaller, something like that. But we work hard on this plan to make this plan work, but we do, we are flexible. If that, you know, it makes, if you see it, something that would effectively make it still work and, and satisfy your folks' requirements.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your explanation there as well, and, and that was my last question.
Thank you, Member Coleheneck. I believe Member Wazinski had a question.
Did. Am I unmuted? I am. I did. So, from what I read, and of course, I've lost it now, but it, the grading is a part of the construction. So although it alluded to the house only being within the 40-foot setback, that grading falls almost to the wetland edge within the 20-foot setback. And the grading, like Mr. Fedewa, you had alluded to, is yard, which concerns me in the fact that the yard would require or could have fertilizer and other things that would impact this, this very sensitive area. And the 20-foot setback piece is very sensitive to a wetland, and that we need that natural vegetation doing, you know, to assure that, that water quality that is less than 500 feet from the, from Lake Lansing. So I, I certainly see that you put a lot of work into, you know, maneuvering and putting this, this building in a specific spot. But not only is the building going to affect that, that 40-foot setback, but all of that grading and all of that yard will certainly affect that, that very sensitive area next to the wetland. And at one point, it's only two feet away from the wetland edge. So I think, I, I guess, I don't know if you have, you know, anything to say to that, or Director Kieselbach. Am I correct in, in thinking that, that grading and/or that yard, or any type of disturbance is affecting both the 20 and the 40-foot setback?
Well, go ahead, Mark.
The one, just the 20-foot closest to the wetland. The, the issue would be this grading is for, allow for the house. That 20-foot, we would put back as natural to try to keep it restored into natural. That next 20 feet, the farthest 20 feet away, the one that's up by the house, the ordinance would allow that to be mowed. It could be mowed. It just says no grading or structure. So once the grading is completed, the 20-foot, other than for where the driveway cuts through that area, should be restored back to its natural state. And then the second 20 feet could be used as yard. The other issue with this is when they dig this basement and put in the foundation, they have to overdig. And they're gonna have some dirt from that site. And Mr. Fedewa can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably some of that's gonna have to be spread out on the site. Or they're gonna have to haul it off the site if it isn't spread out.
If I can answer that question. Basically, when we would excavate the 1,200 square foot of basement, once, the house will sit up out of the ground above the road, a couple, two or three feet. And so we grade on around it to have water flowing away, away from the house. And then we would restore it to the condition of, of the lawn for the 20 feet. That is the, the 40-foot setback, we would restore that to lawn. And then leave the closest 20-foot boundary from the wetland. We would not, not, we would not disturb that. Except for, we would replace it back to the corner where you see the 2.2 foot 6, or whatever it is. That area would be restored to the original. There's some grasses on that site. It's not like there's, there's, the wetland, as I said, is very, very defined. And that wet, land boundary is very defined. And so it just really does start and stop there. And there's all, all natural grasses. But the closest boundary to the house we'd like to have is lawn. And the, the second 20 feet, that would be left. But we do grade around the house, just so we have water flowing away. So we tried to depict a realistic grading plan. It could be minimized even further. And, and we could take spoils off-site and minimize even further the grading.
Thank you.
I have a question. Well, I think there's a little pause here, and nobody raised their hands fast enough. Can either, either Director Kieselbach or Mr. Chapman talk about the ordinance itself and why we have these setbacks and these, and this, in particular, this 20-foot and this 40-foot? And what we are trying to minimize as far as what, what are we trying to minimize with these ordinances? I'd like to speak more to the spirit of the ordinance, so I think we can answer some of our criteria here, if we can have a clear-cut answer on that.
And, and I'll go ahead. That first 20 feet, and it's referenced as a natural vegetation strip on our ordinance. And the idea was that area would be protected to give that buffer to the wetlands. So water quality coming off this, like, from the house would be filtered through this vegetation strip before it got to the wetland. Again, the wetland's there to filter water. We do allow in that vegetation strip invasive species to be removed. They allow some pruning and clearing of that. But the idea is to try to keep it as much in its natural state as possible. That second 20 feet, again, was an additional because of the size of the wetland, 20, more than two acres was the 40 feet. It does allow grass, which also will help filter the water. It didn't want to have, the ordinance says no structures, and the issue was the structure was trying to keep it away as far as possible from the wetland.
Thank you, Director Kieselbach. That helps. And I, I don't know actually who would have an answer to this question, so if any of you do have an answer, that would be helpful. My question would be about the erosion control. I know that we have a note from staff discussing soil erosion fencing that needs to be put in. But can we talk more about that? I mean, I think Member Wazinski touched on one of the points that I was, that, that is putting up red flags for me. And that is the fact that Lake Lansing is 500 feet away. And this wetland acts as a filter for, for Lake Lansing. So I know that that's something in our area that, you know, obviously, we want to try and preserve and keep as clean and healthy as possible. So curious as to the, as to the measures there that are going to be in place in this build and in this, you know, and somebody residing in this home that will protect those areas. Can anybody speak to that for me?
Well, the, the soil erosion fund says the, if you do approve the conditions, says it needs to be put at the boundary of the well and that is, you know, again, identifies that boundary during construction. And it also will help in stopping any soil or anything running off from the site into, into the well and, and stop that flow. Once the plant material is restored and back and growing, then that, that will be removed, the soil erosion funds. Is that, did that answer, or is?
I think it helps. I think that the part I'm still having a hard time with is during the construction process, we have some protections in place. Post, we are relying on just the restoration of the wetland back to what it is. And again, I think I'm, I'm wondering if those, if those numbers exist in, in our ordinance. That, that 40-foot and that 20-foot, that's obviously what we deem to be the most reasonable space with which to protect those areas. So I think that's where, where I'm starting to struggle with, trying to figure out how we encroach so far in those reasonable spaces in order to build, how we still protect those spaces.
To mention that, because the engineering department has the issue of soil erosion permit, so they'll oversee that. To mention that, because the engineering department has the issue of soil erosion permit. So they'll oversee that during construction to make sure that, that, um, fencing stays in place and it's intact. And then they won't release that, um, permit until the grass or the plant material's been established and, and growing. So they do monitor it during the construction.
Can I inter, oh, I'm sorry. Can I interject?
Sure, Mr. Fedewa, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, David in Engineering is responsible for a monitoring soil erosion control. And, and David does a very good job of monitoring. He's on these build job sites weekly. And then what the township will do when we apply for our, uh, CFO, our Certificate of Occupancy, if the yard is not established, we have to escrow funds. And then upon, they come out and they view the site and, and verify that the vegetation has rooted and taken hold before they release escrow funds. So they have a kind of a policing system in place and they do a very good job. We do, we build outside of the townships quite a bit, which is handled by a lot of times the county. And I think that the township is more vigilant in monitoring soil erosion control. And then they have the buffer with the, uh, the, uh, escrow, escrow funds. So, and, and we work with, uh, we work inside the township as builders. Uh, you know, we've built, I don't know, I don't know how many homes inside the township. So we know all of the building inspectors, all the engineering people. And I think that they see us as responsible. And so, uh, you know, we're not a fly-by-night operation that's gonna come in and, and stomp around and mess things up. We would be very respectful in our build and knowing that we're close to the wetland buffer zone. And the driveway, as it comes out to the base, is close to the wetland itself. And because of the fact that that wetland is so defined, we know exactly where we're at. And the soil erosion control measures would be in place before construction commenced.
I appreciate that, Mr. Fedewa. Thank you for that input. Um, do we have any other members that have questions? Anybody want to take a, uh, a stab at the criteria? Any takers? Come on, you know you want to. You know, it's been a while.
Hold, give me a moment.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if you guys know my background. I was a planner for twenty years. Okay?
Great. Well, also, we, we welcome that.
I don't, I don't come to this, like, with, without any knowledge. Okay? So if that's, if that's, you know, biasing me, you can, you're free to, free to call me out if you want, but a wetlands ordinance for a township is a broad stroke. It's gonna hit some people accidentally therefore. Like, you know, it's, it's just necessary. It's just, it's the kind of, it's the kind of thing that is just gonna cause this kind of reaction. So in, in light of that, I do think the circumstances are unique to this particular structure, or excuse me, to this particular piece of property. Just because what Mr. Fedewa said, you know, I agree, the road setback is huge. Something's gotta give. You've got side setbacks, you've got a road setback, you've got wetland setbacks. If you apply them all, like he said, you put a trailer there, and I'm not even sure that you could even build the trailer there because you can't get the driveway grading across the, the setback. He didn't do that. Therefore, the circumstances are not self-created. Like, that's just the way of the land out there. That's just, yeah, yeah, he didn't build a wetland and go, oh, my gosh, I painted myself into a corner. I do think that strict interpretation enforcement of this is going to make this development of this property virtually impossible. Um, and practical difficulties that result. I mean, there's a, there's a sale. And I don't like using a sale as a criteria. Money is, money changing hands is not a, not anything that I ever use as a criteria as a planner. But the fact of the matter is it is zoned residentially and they're trying to, like, someone's trying to sell it to a developer to build a residence on it. And if you don't get the, if they don't get this variance, that deal falls apart. Um, because of, I mean, because of all the variance, all the, all the setbacks that are coming into play, I do think this is the minimum, I mean, that they can do. I, I have one small caveat about that. I mean, I came into this, I'd said, you know, thinking, wow, this is over, almost a twenty-two-hundred square foot house. But Mr. Fedewa pointed out, it's gonna be two stories. That's half, like, like, what do you, what did you say? About a twelve-hundred, eleven-hundred square foot footprint? That doesn't seem out of character with the area. Um, I don't agree with, uh, the comments that we got from the public. I do not think this is going to adversely affect adjacent land. I think the essential character is going to remain the same. The very distinct wetland is going to remain very distinct. Lake Lansing's gonna be okay. I'm sorry. Uh, I don't think that this is the kind of thing that's going to set of, you know, a test amendment into motion or anything like that. I don't think we're gonna see a slew of people trying to build twenty-foot from a wetland or anything. So number seven, I don't think this is a recurrent problem. And overall, uh, I do think it's consistent. And if you're ready, I'm prepared to make a motion on this.
Okay, let's, uh, see. Any other board members have any comments on Mr. Shorkey, uh, Member Shorkey's, uh, run through the criteria there? Would we like to run through it one more time or, um, any, any discussion there? Or motion? Member Wazinski?
Um, thank you, Member Shorkey. Appreciate your expertise from a planning's perspective. I, I wouldn't mind running through them maybe a little slower for the rest of us, but I can give some overall comments that, um, you know, Mr. Shorkey's a planning, planning person, but as a, uh, as an environmentalist and coming from, um, environmental science and from, land use development, uh, you know, we have a, we have a, a land use and a master plan for a reason. It was very intentional. We also have our wetland, um, ordinances that are very intentional. And and I'm, I'm a little concerned with, with developing a land that is a wetland going outside of those ordinances just because we want to put a house there. Um, I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Fedewa, I appreciate, it's obvious, you, you have situated that in the best way possible, I think. And I think that the footprint is, is probably as small, that is, as small as we can get, that would be, you know, a, a house that, you know, somebody would want there. And, and I also appreciate you, you, you mentioned a donation of some of the wetlands to the land preserve, preservation as well. But, um, I, I'm just, I'm not there yet. Um, Chairman Suer. So I don't know if we want to go through it, or, I mean, I'm fine to make a motion and I'm ready to vote, but I'm, I'm really not in support at this moment.
I think, um, I, if, if everyone's okay with that, I think we can go through the criteria. Um, I know, uh, Member Shorkey, um, I like to go through and our previous chair liked to go through and kind of go through and read every, every one of those criteria and just really hit those, those and just allow for a little bit of spacing and discussion there so that we can.
Sorry if I stepped.
Oh, no, 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 not at all. Not at all. Remember, we are all coming back to this as a first-time, um, meeting for a very long time and you're joining us tonight. So um, I really appreciate you taking the initiative there and going through them. Um, I'm gonna hit them just, just so that we can all, um, kind of go back through and not only just hear, hear your points, but make sure that we're all kind of.
Sure, sure.
I mean, and obviously, this is, we, we have five members here. Um, and I know, Member Wazinski, we all are gonna vote the way that we're gonna vote, the way that we feel, um, we have to vote on this. And, but we have to remember too, we have those eight criteria for a reason. If we cannot hit a yes on all those eight criteria, it is our duty as a board not to allow, um, a variance if we can't hit those criteria. So, um, I just wanna, wanna give that as a overview and a reminder. But let's, um, let's start from, um, from one. Unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structure in the same zoning district. I think that Mr. Shorkey made a very good point here. This is, this is unique. And to add, criteria number two, these circumstances are not self-created. I believe this is a unique property. And I believe that these are not self-created issues. Um, I don't believe that the, the owner of the property, who Mr. Fletcher is representing, is responsible for these issues either. Buying the property a long time ago, obviously, land changes, it, it, you know, and especially when we're talking, discussing wetlands and in that Lake Lansing area, I mean, things are going to change. The, the, the natural environment there is bound to change. So I think that, um, I, I hope I'm not alone in thinking, and I know Mr. Shorkey joins me on that, that these are not, uh, these are unique circumstances that are not self-created. But then when we get into criteria number three, I think is where we are gonna start having some, some questions. I'm not getting my, I'm relying on my phone to read these criteria because my printer didn't work. So I'm gonna switch over to my Gmail on my, oh, here we go. Okay, now it's working for me. Maybe not. Okay. Here we go. All right. So criteria number three being strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulty. Um, again, Member Shorkey touched on that. Does anybody want to discuss, uh, the practical difficulties aspect and the strict interpretation? I mean, I think I could make it. Go ahead, uh, Member Field Foster.
No, I, I, so I, I go back and forth on the practical difficulties. Um, one, um, in, um, I don't necessarily agree with using the financial aspect of it as a practical difficulty. That's the sale, no sale, that, that's just not something I think is what we would consider as a practical difficulty. However, um, it has been zoned as single-family residential. And as a result of the zoning of that, typically render it useless, is a practical difficulty. And that's, that's the piece where, at least on, on that factor, I just wanted to, to clarify a bit. I don't really know how to get around the zoning that has been there since the sixties where it basically says you can build a house here and then turn around and have a property that we're saying you can't build a house here now. So that's, that's the practical difficulty I think that, um, we, we run into at least in, in this, uh, portion of the, the, uh, criteria.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Um, I would think that, that this strict interpretation of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties. Which I think exactly as, as you just explained, if we're talking about building a single-family home and in a residentially zoned, single-family zoning district, that, the, the, the ordinances that we're discussing are prohibiting that process from happening. Um, I also don't, I, I would agree that our, our purview really isn't too, um, about the sale because this, this variance travels with the property. So it's not just the sale. So if Mr. Fedewa builds on this and then decides in however many years to sell, that variance goes with him. So this is more to me about the fact that, um, whether or not they can put a house here. So the person that Mr. Fletcher represents has been, you know, has owned this property for that long with the idea of building a house there. So things change over time, obviously, but I think that these now interpretations are prohibiting that usage. Um, for Shorkey, go ahead.
If I misspoke, I didn't mean to imply that I thought the fin, the sale of the house was a consideration on this point. I was, I meant, I, I thought I was speaking to the strict interpretation of all of the setbacks and all of the, including the, the side setback, the road setback, et cetera. And I was basically agreeing with Mr. Fedewa. The size of the house that would result from strict interpretation of all those setbacks would be untenable. Like, you just wouldn't be able to construct that house at that point. Um, that was my point on that. And if I, if I, if I missed, if I, if I misconstrued, I apologize.
Oh, I don't think there's any need to apologize. Um, just wanted to clarify that point. You made some good points. So, um, I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I, I would agree with that. No, no need to apology. This is discussion. So this is when we get to get, get our, our, you know, points out and, and, you know, just communicate with each other and figure out where, where we're at on this. So, Member Wazinski, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate this discussion. I do. Um, I'm wondering, so a practical difficulty, I mean, so the footprint of the house, I think, Mr. Fedewa, you said around twelve-hundred. I mean, there is still a possibility to reduce that footprint or move it so it's not necessarily that shape. You can still per, you can still build a house on this, the buildable part of this land. It's just not necessarily the shape or the size that, um, that Mr. Fedewa was proposing. So I just kind of want to make that point. It, it's not that it's not buildable. Um, it is buildable. It is buildable outside of the, the current ordinances. Um, it just not, might not be ideal, I suppose.
So I think, um, too, that maybe your point to, um, Members Wazinski talks to number five, right? Which is granting the variance is the minimum action that will make it possible, the use of the land and structure in a manner which is not contrary to the public interest and which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. So perhaps that's where minimum action comes in, is, is the size of the house the minimal action that can be, where, where I think, um, uh, Mr. Cole, Coleheineck was discussing the grading. Like, there, there, there are certain, you know, a couple of points there where is that the minimum action, um, that can be taken as far as building on this property to satisfy those setbacks and those, those ordinances? So I think I'm, I'm with Member Wazinski on five, still being a little bit, I'm not clear if that's the minimum action. So. Uh, but let's see, um, number four. Criteria number four is the alleged practical difficulties, which will result from a failure to grant the variance, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose. So I think, um, kind of, kind of joining that together with the third criteria about strict interpretation. I do see where, again, we can go to, you know, if this is, um, zone residential and you want to build a house there, the, there are certain aspects of these, um, of these ordinances that are gonna either, either require a variance in one, one way or another, either within the, the wetlands, within the setbacks on the other end of the property. So I do think that I can, I can make a reasonable, reasonable argument for three and four. You know, needing to grant a variance on, on those two criteria. Where I am again, I'll just say again, I think number five, the minimum action is where I'm still kind of, kind of stuck. So, um, anybody else want to discuss those two, three and four? Can we satisfy those or not satisfy those?
I, I agree with you, um, on those. And so I, would it be proper for us to ask Mr. Fedewa, is there the potential to, um, make the house, I don't know, different shape, uh, smaller and footprint, something to give comfort that this is the minimum action that can be taken in order to get more comfort on that criteria?
Can I answer that question?
Yes, please. Mr. Fedewa, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the, uh, one of the things is, is that the driveway traverses through the, uh,
Okay, well, the uh, one of the things is, is that the driveway traverses through the uh, buffer zone. And comes within two feet of the wetland. And so um, to be able to build a house, you would be grading the driveway to get out to the street. Uh, so that being the case, there is no way to, if that could not be granted. Then that would make the lot not buildable. Because the, this land, they uh, because of the angle, and I could, we could put that up on the screen again for a little bit of a review. Uh, but uh, as this driveway goes out, it traverses the forty-foot buffer, the twenty-foot buffer. And comes within two feet of the actual wetland. Now the, and that is where the edge of the property line lies. So uh, you know, to, so to move it further to the, I'm gonna call it west. Or to the left of your walk, walking up the driveway, you would need then a variance, or excuse me, an easement from the county. Which may grant it, may not grant it. But uh, the, it's pretty difficult if that you review where the forty-foot buffer line is. To build a house i- in that, in that area. You know, if you would point that out, even with that forty, you see where the forty-foot buffer is and how it comes in there. And you have the uh, eighty-five-foot line of the, of the setback. Um, you know, uh, can you build something? Well, i- if you build something that is narrow, but you would still have the driveway that has to pass through the buffer, two buffer, the forty-foot and the twenty-foot buffer. So stair, a variance would still be needed to achieve that. Uh, can we uh, minimize some of the grading? We can do that. We can take spoils off-site and minimally uh, grade closer. Within, you know, fifteen feet of the actual structure on all sides, with the exception of the uh, two-foot-six. Or it comes within that area, where that would just be hand graded. We can do that. And, you know, if you approved it subject to grading within fifteen foot of the building, with that exception, we can make that work. We can make a plan like that work. Changing the plan, you would still need a variance to be able to use this lot. So, and uh, so because the, uh, amount of work that is involved in making this parcel work. It's, it's heavily wooded, trees need to be removed. Um, the sewer line is across the street and which is, can we work through? And uh, so, you know, there's this additional issue. So you wanna have a home that you can build, that somebody wants to buy. And um, my son Will, who works for us, has deemed this the perfect site for him, even though it's very small. And so we proposed the plan, but we can minimize more of the grading. Uh, and we can tilt the house a little bit more. But you see how that the drive goes from the street up to the house? And we angled the house a little bit, just so that, you know, you can get in and out of the driveway and down to the street. And so that's why the house plan is the way that it is. But we would be glad to uh, tackle the grading edge and shrink it down to uh, fifteen feet around the actual building. If that can, if that can help for you to see that we are minimizing our impact.
Member Wazinski, I'm, I'm sorry, couldn't see any, any response. Does that satisfy your question? Or does that leave more questions or amendment necessary to perhaps a future motion?
I, I think that, that's, I, I appreciate certainly offering that. And I'm trying to determine what the fifteen feet would look like. Um, and I understand the, the practical difficulty is the driveway, no doubt.
Yep, absolutely. I would, I would.
No way you can, yeah, there's no way, there's no way I can see, not being a planner or a developer, to, to, um, to make that a better, a better spot. I um, I do appreciate, you know, reducing the grading. Um, I, I really would want to keep all the natural vegetation within that twenty-foot setback. And anywhere we can within that forty-foot setback. So I, I think that helps. Yeah, that does help. I don't know how that works on, I'm putting contingencies on. I don't know how that works in the ZBA. About requiring that on applications. I don't know how that works, I suppose.
Right. Perhaps staff could talk, to talk to us about that, whether or not there are any sort of conditions we can place on, um, you know, maintaining those. Um, I, I believe, I mean, I, I know that there are, I know I'm, I'm misplacing them. I know that there are conditions that staff had placed on um, of, of variant. If we did grant the variance, um, let me see if I can go back to those and maybe mem, uh, Mr. Chapman had a couple additional.
Again, but um.
Yeah.
Talked about a little bit. Once you make your motion, if you wanted to add something to uh, the effect of, you know, only allowing grading within a certain distance uh, of the house, then you could do that. But let me share my screen here.
So we could, we could as um, as a board, say, we do approve uh, this variant request. They, with the, with the condition that grading is only within, um, you know, up to two feet or something for that regard.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so here's the, the ones that staff uh, recommended be added to uh, any approval.
Okay. So member Wazinski, I think where, where I was kind of questioning earlier was the fact that a lot of these have to do with, um, strictly with construction. And I think that you are probably, um, and I will not put words in your mouth, are you thinking about post-construction? That is what, what is concerning to you.
I'm certainly thinking long-term for the, you know, the, the water quality, the quality of the ecosystem, the long-term effects on both this wetland as well as Lake Lansing. Um, but also, um, you know, just making sure that long-term, you know, if we grant this variance. What if then that owner might be Mr. Fetois, but then started, you know, making sure that they're not using fertilizers and not, not mowing within that twenty-foot setback? It just, it puts a lot of work on our staff um, to, to, you know, to ensure compliance with some of those two. So I'm thinking, you know, maybe that as well. So, and that's nothing we can secure.
No. Unfortunately not. I mean, and that goes, that goes beyond, I mean, that's, you know, whether that's code compliance. Um, that's definitely beyond our purview and I don't believe that we can require, you know, hey, somebody has to check on it every six months to make sure you're, you know, I mean, we can't, we can't require that. So I think the best we can do is what we can, what, what we can control is in the building. And then hopefully the, the preservation of those lands before um, anything happens to them, so. Um, I think going back to our criteria here again for a moment, I think it sounds like we're still kind of hung up on, on um, criteria number five. Um, but uh, we can go to, and if, and if any other of our members are, wanna discuss number five or have any, or, or can satisfy that requirement. And wanna, you know, help um, get the rest of the group there, that would be great. Um, and member Colhanek, please speak up.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I don't think I have anything to say in addition to anything anybody has said before. Um, you know, I um, I'm viewing this, you know, it's an enormous parcel, I think, that's a twelve or thirteen acres. And if it were in my neighborhood, it would have twenty, thirty houses or maybe even more. And uh, here they're looking at one house. And um, and there, you know, we've all seen these diagrams and there's all these lines across the diagram such that they're really limited in where they can build this house. And uh, and that, and now they've, they've gone a step further. I was probably ready to approve this uh, as presented. But they've gone a step further and said, uh, you know, we, we're, we're willing to limit that grading to within fifteen feet of the structure. If I, if I think I got that right. And if there's gonna be a, a house on this single uh, family parcel, it just seems like um, you know, at some point, something does have to give. Um, and uh, it, it just seems to me like, like they're, they're meeting the, the um, requirements as best they can here at, at this point. And uh, so from my perspective, I, I do think they're, they're meeting number five, if that's helpful. Um, and uh, with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to you for, to, to move on.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that uh, input. Definitely, um, definitely thankful for uh, for input. Member Field Foster, go ahead.
Um, actually, I would, am I, okay, I'm, I'm off mute. Um, I would actually just um, agree with that. Um, as I'm looking at it in respect to all the lines and the different um, ordinances and setbacks that are there on the property. I mean, there's really no way to get to the buildable land without getting a variance of some sort to get to that property. And I think with, as long as that condition is added, then I think we can um, at least I can get to the, the point of saying that the minimum um, criteria is being met on number five.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Member Wazinski, did you wanna add?
One more. I thought this was gonna be an easy one, but.
I know.
No, not at all. Um, Mr. Fetois, could you, so um, if we were to instill a, a, a condition of the fifteen-foot grading from the structure. Not how sure that would work with the, with the actual driveway. But you had, you had mentioned that you would be willing to maybe donate land to the land preserve. Is that still on the table? Could that be a condition?
No, that can be a condition. And if we bring up the map, David, can you bring up the map? Yeah, yeah, and point to the bottom point right, right here, right there, and go straight up. That section, that rectangle, we would be glad to donate if that the township attorney can draw up a deed, a legal document to a, a legal description for that. I would be glad upon approval to sign that off to the township or land preservation. And you can include that, and that parcel right there, that rectangle is about nine-point-five acres. And it is adjacent to the park north that you'll see. It's, it's, it's adjacent to that parcel right there. That's part of the preservation system.
And may I ask, um, Director Kieselbach, did, you know, I hate to make decisions without Director Mazner here. Um, or the staff and, and how that implication might fall within, within that. But um, do you see any um, adverse effects or any resistance if, if we wanted to maybe pursue that route of land donation?
Uh, as long as it's not, I, I'm concerned that um, that this turns out that the variances aren't gonna be approved unless the land's donated. Which is not the way to handle this. Um, and, and you're speaking for whether it's um, land preservation or the township board, are they willing to accept that donation? We don't know that at this time. Again, um, it's all wetlands. Is it something that's gonna fit into um, what they're considering? Um, so I think it would be better as a um, recognizing the offer from the applicant in leaving it at that. Um, I'm just leery not to require that as a, that could be assumed as a condition of approval, that it has to be donated.
Understood. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Can I interject? Uh, we would, we're only in a position to make that donation if we own it. And that we would, that we can only own it if we can build on it. So I know that it's not, you can, you could uh, a letter of intent, maybe? That, you know, the donate, if we own it, it doesn't have to be tied to it. But if we take possession of the land, we would donate that rectangle at nine-point-five acres if we own it. So it could be conditional upon our, our ownership.
Member Field Foster, thank you, Mr. Fedewa.
So while I appreciate that, just going back to what Director Kieselbach said, I honestly, I appreciate that. But I, um, that would have nothing to do with um, how I would vote or I think how anyone else um, on the board would vote. Um, we really have to look just at the, the criteria that's in front of us. And so what you do with the property, um, whether it's nine-point-two, nine-point-five, or whatever that happens to be, has no bearing on the actions that we take here today. So um, I just wanted to make that clear for the record, moving forward, that one has absolutely nothing to do with the other.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that um, addition. And I would agree, and as the chair of the uh, Meridian Township CBA, definitely support member Field Foster's statement. That we are absolutely appreciative of, of that offer, but that in no way has anything to do with our decision-making process here. Um, it is very generous, but that is um, not, does not fall within our eight criteria. So um, that being said, I'm gonna get back to criteria number six, which um, I think we, I, I think we've, we've gone through criteria number five, which is minimum action. Enough that I think that we um, all have our, our wits about us as far as what, where, how we would um, use that to make our decision, voting on a motion. Um. Criteria number six is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. Anybody wanna speak to that at all? I think the, the concerns that I had um, specifically regarding, you know, the adjacent land and property, the effect in the wetlands, the effect on Lake Lansing. Um, I, I am satisfied enough that this is what we, we've, we've put these, we, as, as in Meridian Township, have put these ordinances in place in order to protect those properties. And that if we are looking at this as being a minimum action, um, that we are as minimally, as minimally affecting the adjacent land and properties as possible with, with this build. Um, I, I don't know what other environmental protections we could put in place here beyond um, what we're doing during construction. That would maybe more satisfy um, those, those wants. Uh, but I, I can, I can meet number six. It was number five that I was really struggling with. But I can, I think I can meet number six, being that we have a house here. Um, it is on a, on a higher elevation uh, than the other areas of the wetlands. Um, we're looking at um, you know, reducing that grading, maintaining those native plants and that vegetation strip as much as possible. And getting that, you know, kind of, other than the driveway, which again is unavoidable regardless of what we do. Um, I mean, the driveway, even if we weren't dealing with the, with these wetlands, we would still be dealing with variances, at least two variances for the driveway. So I mean, that, that being said, I, I, I think that we can probably, I can, I can satisfy number six. Is there anybody that's still struggling with, with number six? Okay, uh, number seven, the conditions pertaining to the land or structure are not so general or recurrent in nature as to make for a formation of a genuine, general regulation for such conditions practicable. I, I mean, this is, this is as unique as they come. I mean, all of these, all of these properties on Lake Lansing and surrounding Lake Lansing are incredibly unique. And I don't see how this could um, require a uh, its own ordinances. its own ordinances. Uh, criteria number eight, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. So, um, I, I do believe that a residential, residentially zoned property should be able to be buildable in our township, um, with the conditions that we are taking as much care as possible with our, um, environment. So I think that in that, with that being said, I think that I can meet number eight, that we're taking the minimal action required to still protect those areas. Um, I'm open to hear any other variations of that. But, um, and please, anyone who has input on number eight or seven is, uh, welcome to chime in. Member Field Foster.
So I don't, um, and I apologize for taking us back, um, really quick, but I think part of, um, I have a little bit of discomfort in the direction that the conversation went regarding the, the land, um, donation, just because of the appearance of a quid pro quo. And with my, um, I mean, background in governmental affairs, I, I am extremely sensitive to, um, situations like this. And so while I definitely would support, um, you know, these factors based on all of the conversations and everything that we had, I, I am just uncomfortable right now, um, casting a, a vote in the affirmative after having had that conversation. So I'm not quite sure what to do with that, but I wanted to put that on the table.
Member Wazinski, go ahead.
I, I appreciate that, Member Field Foster. I don't, for me, it was a question like, long-term. I don't think, I think we're all in agreement that that would not be a condition. It would not be a, uh, something that we would want to entertain at all. So, um, so I understand, you know, the uncomfortability of that, but I, I would not pursue that in any sense, um, going forward, if that's helpful at all.
I, I appreciate that. I, I mean, and I, I was not, um, implying that you would or, or anything else. It's just when a conversation goes a particular direction and you can, and, you know, and we entertain that conversation, it, it's, it's on the record. And, and as a result of that, that's, that's, you know, giving me discomfort at the, at the moment. So, um.
But could I say something?
Mr. Fedewa, please.
I would like to withdraw that conversation regarding the land offer. And if that, in the future, if that we did own it, I think that that would just be a nice thing for the township that extends the park area. And it would be totally useless for us to have. So irregardless, if that, it was dependent on that, we don't care. But sometime in the future, if we own it, we would like to give it, but don't want to have any correlation at all with this conversation. And want everybody to, I want to be on record to say that, uh, that, uh, that is not what we're, uh, trying to do here. We're not trying to do that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Fedewa. I appreciate that. And can I just say also again, as the Chair, that the Chair recognizes that, um, we, uh, focus on these eight criteria. These eight criteria are what we look at in order to satisfy, um, whether or not we can grant a variance. So the conversation regarding that was very generous of Mr. Fedewa to have offered, but in no way, shape or form, um, it has any standing within our criteria. Um, our criteria are there for a reason. We have taken, um, I mean, this, this, to, to, for us to be discussing a case for this long, and this is a singular case, um, we, we take this job very seriously. We, um, we have gone through these criteria very minutely and, and with a, with a fine-tooth comb to get through, um, these very specific legal terms and definitions. So I do appreciate, uh, Member Field Foster, um, bringing that up and making that very clear, that the, um, zoning board of appeals in no way, shape or form would, um, would, uh, make that, that sort of request that has nothing, no, no bearing on any decision made here. And, um, just, just to be very, very clear, that that has nothing to do with our criteria, um, going forward. So hopefully, um, our, our minutes reflect that, our discussion reflects that, and our characters of board reflects that. Um, and that being said, I think that, um, we have gone through the eight criteria. And we've made it through number eight. Uh, I would welcome any other further board discussion at this time that we, um, you know, if, if any of these criteria have changed for you, um, would be the time to discuss. Otherwise, um, the floor is also open for a motion. Um, we did have a couple of ideas and, um, thoughts there regarding some conditions to be placed if a variant is granted. Uh, so we can feel free to discuss that. Um, but, uh, the floor is open for board discussion still. And we'll be open until we have a motion or we have more discussion. So consider that, members. Member Shorkey.
I make a motion that we approve this request to, for the variances with the conditions as proposed by staff. Except that, um, we're adding fifteen percent, or fifteen feet grading around the building. Did I get that right? Did I, did I, I, that's, that's what I have written down. That's what I have written.
That's what I have written down too.
Okay.
Within fifteen, I'm sorry, but I, I think we, we need, we do need clarity. Um, thank you, Member Shorkey.
I'm making a motion we approve, when we approve the variance requests with the conditions as recommended by staff, with the additional condition that the grading be limited, the grading be limited to fifteen feet around the building, around, around the home.
Can I add something?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Go ahead.
The intent is to stay out of the, the twenty-foot wetland boundary as well. So I think you would want to say something, you know, along the lines of not within that twenty-foot natural vegetation strip as well. Uh, just because if you go fifteen feet around the building, that'll be into that, that twenty feet. So.
Can we, can we see that, um, your, let's see, let's see yours one more time, just so that we have clear language. Um, I want that as well for, um, for the applicant, um, so that we are very clear on the language here as to what we're approving.
Let me see here. Whoops. Okay, so, like here, you want to say?
I see your point.
The twenty feet, so. I mean, I, I don't know how you want to word that, but.
See, either way, if we're looking at that, we have that, that one corner where, uh, Mr. Chapman's cursor is, that's at two point, or two foot, six inches, um, from the corner of the house. That's the, you know, I think that is our, a, and right clear down to the driveway. So, um, as far as the grading edge, um, I'd love, um, some input from my fellow members as far as what we find to be minimum action, so that we can add that and make it a reasonable addition to a variant, uh, variance, um, approval. Does anybody have any input on that one?
The grading edge encroaches into the twenty-foot setback generally in two points, at that corner where the cursor is, yes, but also in the front yard of the house.
Down to the driveway.
Yeah. So rather than saying fifteen feet from the house, what if we said grading is to be kept out of the twenty-foot set, wetland setback in the front, in the front yard of the house?
I think, um, we could probably.
Get to where you're going?
Uh, I, I would ask more along the lines of, from a driveway standpoint, does that still allow for proper, uh, for, for a driveway? I mean, I guess my question is more of a building aspect, and maybe Mr. Fedewa can answer that. That grading edge, could we take it to inside of the twenty-foot, um, natural vegetation setback? Um, and if not, can you give us a little bit of indication as to what that grading there is doing?
Um, yes. Um, well, uh, where the, where the driveway is, you have to, uh, scrape the top soil and put down gravel. And then, uh, and then maybe at some time add pavement to that area. So that, that forty-foot buffer area and that twenty-foot buffer where that driveway comes out would be graded, that you would grade into that area. And I'll be graded. Uh, when, when we were thinking about this, we can, the two-foot-six area, we were talking about hand grading in, in and around that area. So in and around the house, if we could say something like, we can grade within fifteen feet, with the exception of that pinch point where we hand grade the, that two-foot-six off that, uh, twenty-foot buffer area, and then be able to build the driveway through the two buffer zones, but stay out of the actual wetland. The driveway has to be graded.
So, um, thank you, Mr. Fedewa, um, for, for the board members. Um, where, where we're looking at now, and I can see from kind of this, um, this kind of corner where our twenty-foot, uh, edge is and the grading edge is, kind of makes an X. Where that is, there's no, there's no possibility, I don't think, it sounds like, from Mr. Fedewa's explanation, to bring that in any further to accommodate for the driveway. So that being said, what else would be satisfying that, um, fifteen-foot for all of us? I would, I would, uh, I would accept a friendly amendment of hand grading at the corner of the house, um, which would take it within that little, that little edge, um, right there in that two, two-foot-six-inch, um, area. Uh, I don't see, especially at the, at, towards where the driveway slopes down, where we're, where we can get them closer and within that fifteen-foot.
Chairman Suer, would it be possible if we, I mean, I, I understood it's got to be graded to install. Um, but the grading edge that's, that's existing there doesn't have to be the long-term grading edge. That could be restored with natural vegetation within that twenty-foot setback. And where that, the grass under the lawn would then be within that forty-foot setback. Is that something we could do where we, we, you know, with the installation of the drive, all of the area within the twenty-foot setback be restored with natural vegetation?
I think that's a question for Mr. Fedewa. That, um, between the twenty-foot and the grading edge there, where it needs to be there for, um, driveway installation and to create that, that lawn area, can that, that piece of that be filled back in with native vegetation after?
My question would be is, could we have Keith put his cursor on the area that you're referring to?
Yes. Um, up a little bit higher there, um, Mr. Chapman, and over, yep, I think right above that edge. And we're talking about, um, kind of a, uh, the other side yet of the driveway.
Down here?
Uh, between the edge of the twenty-foot buffer zone and the twenty-foot natural vegetation setback and the grading edge to the, um, east of the driveway.
Oh, right here.
And, yep, in that area.
So this whole area here?
Yes.
Okay. And what you're saying is, can that grading area disappear out there? And ye- yes, that can disappear out there and, and stay inside the, uh, twenty-foot setback until we get to the driveway. Is that correct?
That's, I think that's what a member Wazinski is, is asking.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, you know, uh, that's absolutely easy for us to do. We're out away from the house. Um, and, uh, so yes. And that, that area does not need to be graded out there.
So, um, could it sound something like this? And member, uh, my fellow members can, um, help me through this wording, but restoring the natural vegetation strip within that twenty-foot setback post-construction completion or pre, uh, certificate of occupancy or something in that general verbiage?
Yeah, I would propose maybe so, because it gets a little complicated. Of course, we've got this two-foot over here. But maybe we could propose, um, not to exceed fifteen feet grading, not to exceed fifteen feet from the building and not to extend into the twenty-foot setback, with the exception of this, um, this would be the.
The driveway edge.
Southeast corner, which would be hand graded. That point of the.
I think, um, oh, member was, oh, there she is. Okay, I think, um, my, my issue with that is, okay, so we're saying not fifteen feet from the house, which for the most part, they are at, other than this kind of, um, edge that goes across from the two, two-foot-six inches down to, um, where it looks like it says twelve feet, um, distance from the house to the, um, to the twenty-foot setback line. Um, is that, that, that's within that forty foot, but it's not fifteen foot from the house? So I think if we're, if we're saying fifteen feet from the house, we're gonna, we're, that's, that's where I'm having a hard time with that.
I get you. I get you.
Yeah.
So then what you initially had said was, um, grading not to extend into the twenty-foot setback post-construction will be, it, it will be in, I guess, ensure natural vegetation within that twenty-foot setback?
Restore natural vegetation of the twenty-foot setback?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to offer, maybe to clarify it, um, that you would grant the variance for the grading as shown on the plan. And if you want to add the condition of the hand grading at the two-foot-six point at the corner of the house and say that after that's completed, then the natural vegetation strip at twenty feet has to be restored prior to an occupancy being granted to the house. Because that, you're granting, basically you're granting the variance for the grading for the driveway to occur. Uh, the rest of the grading would occur except that hand grading adjacent to the house. And then the twenty-foot natural vegetation would be restored.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's clear.
Yeah.
For us, for me, if I have to enforce it, it's a little bit clearer that way.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I, I, I think that, um, that, that language sounds good to me, and I could, uh, I could agree with that. Um, I know, uh, Member Shorkey has a motion on the table. Um, and I think, does that help us to get to language for that motion? Shall we try it again?
I will amend the motion to, and, and, and say, um, recommend, I'm, I would, I would make a motion to say that we're appro, that we will approve the variance requests with the conditions as presented, as proposed by staff, with the additional conditions of hand grading on the southeast corner of the house within, you know, hand grading in the, and, and that then, and that the natural vegetation in the twenty-foot buffer in the front setback of the house be put in place prior to occupancy, with the exception of the driveway.
I'll second.
All right. Got a second, okay. Okay, well, on that note, I'm totally, uh, don't know what I'm doing with myself anymore. All right, we have a motion from Member Shorkey, seconded by, um, Member Wazinski. Um, any discussion regarding those additional amendments, or any discussion regarding the motion? If not, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. Okay. Member Shorkey?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
I'll pass.
I'm sorry, are you, you broke up?
I'll pass.
You're passing? Okay. Member Wazinski?
Yes.
Member Klahenek?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So the, um, variance has been granted. Uh, let's see. On that exciting note, I believe that we are at the end of our agenda for the evening.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Member Shorkey.
All your cases take two hours to discuss?
No. Actually, I won't say that, because last time we were, we were, we were, uh, here until like nine-thirty. The last meeting was, was a long one as well.
Typically, they're really short.
Typically, when we're in person too, it's just, I mean, maybe it's, it's the, it's the Zoom of it all. It makes it much easier to really, you know, get
Yeah.
in the weeds, but, um, no.
It's all good.
Typically, it's not. But Mr. Mr. Fedewa, your variance applications have, have been, um, approved. And, uh, you know, obviously you'll be in contact with staff, and we appreciate your patience. We appreciate your, um, your input and working with us, uh, to, to go through our criteria. Because again, we, we definitely take it very seriously. We are here to, for the best interests of the township, and we appreciate, um, we appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Appreciate your diligence and your very careful consideration. And, uh, I think that we're going to build my son a house. We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, great. Have a good night, Mr. Fedewa.
Thank you.
All right, and on that note, um, is there anything, anybody else? Uh, I don't see any attendees left, I don't believe. Um, anybody else would like to make comments? Public comment is now closed. Um, then we can go to board member comments. Any board members that have anything they'd like to add tonight? I do. I will add that I appreciate, um, you know, welcome, Mr. Shorkey, to your first, uh, first meeting with us. As an alternate member, we appreciate your, uh, your, uh, being here. And I do, I do very much appreciate, um, I will say, um, the integrity of, uh, the decision-making that we've come to tonight. Um, and also, um, Member Field Foster being very, very clear on what we are doing as far as, um, ethics go within our meetings and making sure that we are always, uh, taking those criteria and just the criteria into consideration as far as approvals go. So, um, I do appreciate and understand your pass, and I just want to let you know that, you know, your, um, legal mind is very, very much respected and appreciated, and I appreciate, um, what you had to do there. I understand.
Well, I, I really appreciated all the discussion. Um, I, I think we really did, um, delve into this topic and, and hit it from all different angles, so I enjoyed it. It, it was a great discussion. Um, and so I really appreciate the new members, um, that we have on the board, and I appreciate your experience and the questions that, that you've asked and added to the, the board. So, um, no, even though it was long, it, it was long. Um, you know, it, it was a good meeting.
Yep. All right, well, on that note, if no other board members have any comments, I'm going ahead, go ahead and adjourn this meeting. That's it. We're done.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Kieselbach and Mr. Chapman for all your help tonight. Appreciate it. Hopefully we'll see you all in September.
Sounds good.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.